To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Wow. Impeccable timings.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who is audio or video recording? If you would just raise your hand and signify. And I see none. Thank you. Selectmen's comments and announcements. Mrs. Blanchard. Any selectman comments or announcements this evening? Mr. Ward.
Yes, I have three. First of all, I want to give a big thanks to our Parks and Recreation Commission, the Rec Coordinator, all the volunteers and town employees, and the residents for making our Robinson-Broadhurst Amphitheater grand opening an overwhelming success. I want to give a thanks shout out to our free local online Winchburn Courier, especially Keith Kent for his upbeat story promoting the grand opening. The Courier is a great source to find out what's happening in our town, and I just wanted to give them some recognition. Finally, most people know that the $4 million amphitheater was funded by the Robinson-Broadhurst Foundation. What many may not know is that since the founding of this foundation in 1984, they have awarded some $37 million to the town of Winchburn. I want to thank them for their continued generosity throughout the years.
Thank you. Mrs. LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to reiterate just what selectman Ward said about the outstanding participation. That was not my stuff. And the grand opening of the amphitheater, the work that went in that from Tiffany Newton and everybody else involved. And I also do want to give a kudos to Robinson-Broadhurst, not only for the contribution, but I'm not sure if it was every member, but a lot of them were there all day, beginning to end, to take part and to share their excitement and their appreciation. So I just want to give kudos to them. And I realize this first event was free, but I just want to implore everybody to keep utilizing the resource, even though there is a fee associated with some of the events. Everybody do what they can to keep it up, and I think it's a great addition to our community.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
Thank you. And just to piggyback on selectman Ward and selectman LaPointe, I would also like to thank our previous town manager, Keith Hickey, who helped spearhead that project and got it going for us. Linda Daigle was instrumental, Dawn O'Neill, and of course, Austin Saginawitz, the selectman that worked with us at the very beginning. And I did not want to forget Dylan Romanowski, who, even though he didn't join the committee till later, he was in on it and working very hard for the park since the very beginning.
Thank you very much. They've said it all. I can't say anything further. So we will move on. Are there any public comments and announcements this evening? I see and hear none. Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight. We do have a joint meeting with the Board of Health to address an appointment resignation. Would you need to call yourself into, call to order?
Yes, I'd like to call the Board of Health meeting to order.
One second.
We are here to discuss the nomination of someone to fill the seat for one year because there was a tie. And I would like to hear from each one of the board members on what their vote was, because we did not decide at the meeting. I left it up to this meeting to decide. So they had time to think about it.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Just a point of order. Are we going to vote before we have the candidates speak?
Any candidate?
We have two candidates here. The one, the two.
They're both here.
So I think they should speak before we do any voting.
I agree.
Okay.
All right. Would one of the candidates care to come forward? I see Mr. Bond.
I've served on the.
If you would, do we have over here? Yep.
I've either served on the Board of Health two terms, and I'm pretty familiar how it operates, and I'm seeking a one-year appointment.
Thank you. I know you've been on it before.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Question for Mr. Bond. I was looking at our packet and looking at the letters of interest that we were supposed to receive. Did you send us a letter of interest?
Yes, I did. Oh, not the Board of Health. I gave it, I mean, I gave it to the Board of Health, not the.
Then how come we haven't received it?
Because at the last meeting, Tina Santos took them with the paperwork, and she is in, what's that?
Dominion Republic.
Yeah, that's where she is now, so we can't reach her to get the paperwork.
Okay, this is, this is a little problem I'm seeing with this whole process, that there was no, no word between the town and the Board of Health on this, and we asked for submissions to be sent to two different places. We got one in the town, and they got one at the Board of Health. We didn't get the Board of Health one. Nobody checked early to get this, so now we don't have the information we should have had. So I am hoping, because we have the same situation coming up the end of this month, we're going to be picking a school committee member, and we're having our candidates send their information to Ryan over at the school committee, and I think to Audrey, the chair here. I hope that those two will get together, and when it comes time to vote, at least a week before, we all get the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bond?
Just one quick question.
Sure.
You were an incumbent. Why didn't you turn in your papers?
I was taking it for granted that I'd been elected the last two terms without turning in the papers, and I guess.
Thank you.
My own fault.
Anything further for Mr. Bond? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And the other candidate, could you come forward? Good evening.
My name is Monique Connor. I have been a Winchburn resident for just about all my life, and I have recently changed jobs, so now I am more available. And I have been wanting to get on the Board of Health for a while. It's just has not been a good opportunity at that time. Now is. So I wanted to take advantage of it when I saw that you guys were looking for something. And I did turn in my letter of.
Interest.
Yeah.
We do have that. Thank you. Let's see. You have a background Healthcare Construction Administration. Any questions or comments from Ms. Connor? Ms. Mrs.?
I'm sorry.
Do you prefer Mrs., Ms.?
Monique is fine.
Monique. Okay. Questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Just, could you expand a little bit on your experience in healthcare? I see as that's pretty relevant.
I have, I was an EMT for the town of Winchburn for about 20 years. I am retired now. I also worked with Haywood Hospital for over 26 years, and I have retired from there as well. Now I have moved on to, I did construction in the hospital because I worked in facilities. Now I work for a construction company. So kind of have a little bit of everything going on.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you very much. So what is the pleasure of the boards?
Sure.
Let's start with the Board of Health, if we may.
I am, my recommendation to the board is, is Ms. Connor. I believe she's got some great experience, very eager to contribute to the board, and I, I think we need that. I think that'll really help the board get to where we need to be involved, how we need to be involved in the town.
Because of the technicality on the other thing, I.
Into the, into the mic, please.
He can't hear you.
Because of the technicality without the paperwork, I also nominate her. With one exception, I wish she wouldn't have gone to social media. I hope, I hope she learns not to do that.
Thank you.
And I also will vote for Monique. But I'm going to say one thing, if I might. The only reason I picked her was because I need someone on the board that can take my place, because I don't know sooner or later, I won't be able to be on the board any longer because of my health. And I want someone that can make this agency, the Board of Health, stronger and better. That's the only reason why I pick her.
Thank you. Does the board care to comment?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. LaPointe.
I would just like to comment that I'm going to abstain from the vote as I feel I have previous relationship with both candidates, and it would be unwise and unfair.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Ward?
Yes, I'm ready to vote. Madam Chair, first of all, I want to thank Eddie Bond for the years he's put in on the committee. But I do feel that when you're on these committees, sometimes you take your duties for granted. And as Mr. Bond said tonight, I took it for granted that I would win. You never, ever take it for granted. You owe the citizens of this town the opportunity to see your name on a ballot, and the fact that it ended up this way is probably a good thing, because I know by law you can do sign-ins, but it's not fair to the public. You need to take, get those 30 signatures, get on the ballot, and let everyone see who's running. So with that, I thank him for his service, but I'll be voting for Monique Connor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the board?
I would just like to say, not being part of the, not being part of the election process, but not being the board that is going to be working directly with this person, for myself, speaking for myself, I'm inclined to follow the lead of the Board of Health. And as they're the one that is going to be working with this person.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
I think I have to agree that, that our job is really to support the Board of Health, even though you are independently elected board, and you don't fall under our jurisdiction. I feel that your vote is what's more important, and I would be more willing to support what you are here to tell us you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Blanchard.
I would like to vote for Monique as, as well with the board's vote. I feel that they're the ones that have to work with the individual and I fully support them.
Is that, do I hear a motion in that?
Yes, there is a motion.
Blanchard?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion to appoint Monique Connor to the, the one-year term for the Board of Health. It has been seconded. Any further discussion?
Can I?
Yes.
Can I just say, and I would hope that she would take out papers when her one-year term is up and put her name on the ballot.
Absolutely. You want to take a separate vote, or you want to do one big vote?
One big vote.
One big vote.
All right. If you don't mind, I will just go around. Okay, so we have vote to, as I said, appoint Monique Connor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Nays. And we do have the one abstention.
Abstain.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Ed.
I want to close the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to close this meeting of the Board of Health.
Seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board of Health stands for close. Thank you.
Thank you.
Six points.
You're welcome. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, we have our Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, yes, Board and Committee Appointments Renewals for July 1st. Town Manager's Office presented this to us a meeting or two ago, just as a heads up that this is coming. Are there, are there any gaps that we're going to need to work to fill or anything, Mary?
Madam Chair, the I-Guy Capressino just sent me in today that he will be staying on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, as well as Historical, and Peg will not be seeking reelection in Historical. That was the only change since this report.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? Seen and hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I would make a motion to approve the Selectman Board and Committee Appointment Renewals for July 1st, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 I believe Ms. Blanchard is going to recuse. Yes, I'm, can you recuse myself here? I'm on this.
I also am on the list. So what is the?
I am off for Conservation Committee.
No, I understand. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained. Recused.
So two, recused. Okay, and all abstain. So it does pass 3-2.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, a couple of reappointments for the board itself. We have the Monticuzet Joint Transportation Committee. Currently, there's two positions. One is filled by the Planning Board, held by Guy Corbusaro. The other one is Board of Selectmen, which is currently held by our Representative Director, Brian Croto, DPW Director. Questions, comments? Mr. Croto, would you be willing to continue in this capacity? Thank you. Is that, does that count, is there?
Yes. I don't know, I couldn't hear it. Put his name on it anyways.
I don't have an issue with that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
While he's up here, only because his position is going to be changing. So I'm concerned, I guess, that it's going to get the attention that it needs to get, even under the new capacity.
It's one meeting a month, and it's via Zoom now, so it's very, very easy to attend.
Okay. Your point taken, though. Should you move on in your role, and should it become an issue, just please let us, report back to the board and let us know.
If it becomes an issue, it would make sense to pass it down to the town engineer once that person is onboarded. It could go either to the director or to, to a town engineer, and that's, that's pretty common, but typically the director holds it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move to appoint Brian Croto to the Massachusetts Joint Transportation Committee, MITC, for fiscal year 2024.
And the other one?
Isn't the other one currently, it's two, isn't it, is it not?
Yeah.
I think we have to do that and then an alternate.
Guy Corbusaro should be appointed as well.
Thank you. But doesn't the Planning Board fill that one?
Yes.
Yes.
But isn't that through the Board of Selectmen?
Correct. Okay.
So I think it's two separate motions, no?
Or we could just do them both together.
Right.
Because technically on that board, I don't have a vote if Guy's present. I'm the alternate for Guy.
Would the make of the motion be amenable to amending it to, say, Brian Croto and Guy Corbusaro?
And you're the alternate?
Yeah, I'm not the lead. The lead is the Planning Board on the MJTC. On the, on the MPO, I'm the lead, but the MJTC is Guy Corbusaro is the lead, and I'm the backup to Guy.
So yes, I'd amend that that Brian would be the alternate, and Guy Corbusaro would be the.
The lead.
Right? Brian main, Guy the alternate.
No, opposite.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Guy is the main guy.
Sorry.
Guy is the main guy.
Guy's the lead. Brian is the alternate.
I'm the alternate now.
Okay. Guy's the guy. Okay. And would the second of the motion be willing to accept that amendment?
I don't think it was seconded, but I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to appoint Guy Corbusaro as lead and Brian Croto as second to the MJTC, Monticuzet Joint Transportation Committee for FY '24. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Next is the FY '24 Monticuzet Regional Planning Commission. Again, we have the Planning Board, who will be appointing, it looks like, yeah, they appoint their member, and we appoint an alternate member. Rick Ward is currently our alternate member. Is this a position to be willing to continue, Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Corbusaro is the Planning Board's member for this.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I would move to appoint Rick Ward to the Monticuzet Regional Planning Commission, alternate position for the fiscal year 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
I don't think we, I don't think we.
We don't appoint the alternate?
They do. No, he's.
Not on this one.
The alternate.
Okay.
This may just do the one.
All right. Yeah. All right, made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Last is the, Mark, Monticuzet Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board. I am currently the representative. If it is the board's pleasure, I would be glad to continue in that capacity. Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I would move to appoint you, Audrey, the Brighton, to the Monticuzet Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board for the fiscal year 2024.
Second.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Seen and hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next up, we have a request for an appointment to Parks and Recreation. In your Dropbox, you will find a, a letter requesting the appointment. From David Alexander. Is he here this evening? Nope, I didn't think so. All right, thank you. Any questions, comments? Ms. Newton, care to speak to this?
And David sat on the Winchburn Community Park Committee for a brief time before we started the merge. His plan was always to continue on with us, but he didn't get his letter intent in when we did the earlier ones ahead of the Attorney General's Office approval. But now that the Attorney General's approved everything, he put his letter in.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
Could I just ask, how many, or are there any seats available still?
So there's nine seats on this new committee. David will be filling seat seven, and I believe we just received another letter of interest today for, so if, from Dylan Romanowski, who has previously been on the Park Committee as well. So that would leave one vacancy, you know, if Dylan was to be appointed, so.
Thank you. Very good. Anything else from the board? Seen and hearing none. I'll accept a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the appointment of David Alexander to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. And one more under appointments. We have a request to appoint Joe Wolski to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
So tell us, first of all, please introduce yourself for the record.
Sure. My name is Joseph Wolski. I'm a resident of the town of Winchburn.
And what's your thoughts on the Master Plan Implementation Committee?
Well, I have a few things that I prepared that I would say. I took a few notes after going through the master plan. I did want to start just by saying that I was most impressed by the event on Saturday night in, in the town. It was, it was a phenomenal gathering, and the outcome of the, you know, just the grand opening of the community park. It's, it's beautiful, and it's something that our community can, can be proud of. There's a lot of history, culture, and talent in the town of Winchburn, and the, and the people that live here. Most importantly, there's a lot of foresight in, in the people and looking ahead. You know, it was once said that someone is sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree a long time ago, and that's true. And I think with the master plan, after looking at it, it's clear that the town is looking ahead for the residents, for the elderly, for the population that may need help, you know, in the future, whether it's transportation, whether it's energy, whether it's the economy of this town. Education is something that I think is very important, that we need to pay attention to. We need to take a time to look at that, particularly with the numbers of students that are going to community schools outside of town and in town. These are things that, these are conversations that we need to have. And the master plan addresses it. I like the strategy. I think it's a phenomenal plan. I also think that it's important to measure goals. You can't have a goal unless it's measured. And I think that we have to, as a committee, I don't know, because I haven't spent any time with the committee, but I'd, I'd be interested in seeing what the performance indicators are for meeting the goals of that plan and how we're measuring them. And, you know, do we have a spreadsheet? And where are we at? And what's the timeframes? I myself work in the energy industry for Unitil. I'm the supervisor of natural gas distribution and construction for Unitil of Massachusetts. That's a New York Stock Exchange company that we're accountable to. We provide energy in Maine, New Hampshire, and Massachusetts. I work out of the Massachusetts Division out of Lunenburg. We have six cities and towns that we provide electricity and natural gas to, and I'm serving on several committees in Unitil as far as looking at the possibility of alternative energy solutions for the future. I think that that's something that I could possibly bring to the town and to the community moving forward, to share those, that, the private sector knowledge that I have with our local government, and maybe make suggestions or, or, you know, offer input, insight. I have three college degrees and currently in my graduate studies at Southern, University of Southern New Hampshire, in engineering management, and with a concentration in construction management. I do have quite a bit of experience with project management execution and strategic planning of projects, so that might be something that could be useful to the board, or to the, to the council, rather. And I, you know, I'd like to share my, my knowledge, experiences, and also any challenges that, that I've faced as far as the energy industry goes, which. and also any challenges that, that I've faced as far as the energy industry goes, which we know that there's a lot of them. So with that being said, I'll try to answer any questions that I can. The questions that I can't answer, I'll, I'll respond to.
Well, thank you very much. I will open it up to the board for questions and comments.
I'm impressed.
Thank you.
I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Lapointe.
Um, I would, just a comment, not a question. I know there's a long, deep-seated tie to Winchonan. So just thank you for your willingness to serve and, and move us forward and.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Lapointe.
I know Ms. Sackett is in the audience, but we do have her note here that they've chatted and she believes he would be a great addition. So thank you. Two thumbs up. Anything further from the board? If there's nothing, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move to appoint Joe Wolski to the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Second.
Thank you. Maiden seconded. Any further discussion?
No, but thank you.
Thank you.
Seen and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. And I'll, I'll do my very best to serve the town.
I'm excited.
All right, we have some permits in front of us this evening. The first one is from Tiffany Newton. Good evening again.
Good evening.
This is an, for an entertainment permit for an event on August twenty-fifth. At the, this will be at the G, um, the amphitheater, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Yep, Billy and the Jets, Elton John and Billy Joel Tribute Band. From seven PM to ten PM. This would be a free admission event. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We have, you know, and forgive me, but we've approved so many different event things. And I know that you, you do post them periodically, but you have this whole list of what's coming up. Do you, only because I can only see like right in front of my nose?
Yeah.
Like every Friday or Thursday or something, just post the one event that you've got coming up for that week. Do we, do we have something like that?
Not specifically.
To help those with squirrel vision.
Yeah.
So as the events come closer, that specific week I'll be posting, you know, those events that we have going on just then, yes.
I have a bad habit of, I look at dates and I, I forget what date we're on and where I'm supposed to be and when. And I do have that squirrel.
And I know that our town website is oftentimes listed as not user-friendly, which I definitely understand, especially if you're on your cell phone. But we did have that new events tab listed next to the calendar on that main page. And so if you ever wanted to look there, it does list them on the dates.
Yeah, but I like, I like people to come after me and say, hey, you're supposed to be here then. Kind of, this is what's going on.
You want somebody to hit you upside the head.
One thing at a time, because, you know, ADHD and all that.
Gotcha.
And I see there are no issues from department heads. So anything further from the board? I want to turn a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the entertainment permit for the recreation, uh, park and recreation commission for Billy and the Jets free concert to be held on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three from seven to ten PM at the amphitheater.
Second for discussion.
Go ahead.
I'm just being a little facetious here, but I see that the box isn't checked for dancing by patrons. And judging by the grand opening, there's going to be dancing by patrons.
I suppose I should have checked that on all of our concerts, yes.
Just a kudos to you guys.
Where, where, where did they dance?
They danced right in front of the stage. There was a grass opening before the first level. There was a lot of dancing. It was neat. It was fun.
Yes, it was.
I'm sorry, just being a little smart.
Curious.
Oh, yeah, Audrey was dancing, as was Linda. Yes, it was very.
Mary was out there.
Mary.
We, we, we.
Justin, I'm sorry, I'm just being a smart aleck.
It was moving to the music.
So we have a motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a, a change of location for a common victualer's license. This is PJ's Slush Shop. Is there anyone here this evening? That's fine. They are now on. Jackson. One thirty-five Front Street is their official new address. Okay. Oh, that's right, they took over behind the.
For Seppi's.
Yes, but where they did Seppi's a few years ago. Okay. Um, no issues from police chief. Questions, comments from the board?
No, I hope they do well.
Yes.
Agreed.
Seen and hearing none, I want to turn a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the common victular change of location only submission by PJ Slush Shop, moving from Central Street to one thirty-five Front Street.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then we have one more. This is a request for a one-day liquor license for Phantom's Brewery Company. Is there anyone from, from that here tonight to represent? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I have a question and I guess the rec coordinator could answer it.
Okay.
I know this one is at the Civil War Park.
Yes.
And it's going to be in that corner. Is that going to be sort of fenced off for drinking? I, I think when Bullspits out there, they usually put a fence around the area.
So, so last year we had kind of like a roping off. And so I've been working with our DPW director about how we were going to handle it this year, given that the event was so large last year and we're expanding our, um, beer options with having three vendors there. So I think we talked about, instead of just having that small area that was roped off with Bullspit last year, we're going to have two, like, almost like half the park down that side with the gazebo where there mostly would be, the vendors will be set up, the beer vendors, and then that other side straight across to, is it Morse? So like that side by Park Street up Morse and Murdoch. That will kind of be the area for alcohol and we talked about doing something similar to how we had the amphitheater set up this past weekend with the no alcohol beyond this point setup. Most of the areas will be blocked off by the food trucks themselves. So that kind of helps, you know, and then that far side that goes into the other side of the park that will have signage. Is that correct?
Okay, thank you.
I didn't attend last year, but that, that little piece of road between Grove and the next one up, was that still open for vehicular traffic? Or did you close that?
The Morse Ave?
I, I should know the name of it.
So like between the gazebo and the senior center?
Yes. The one, the side of the senior center that faces the GIR Park.
Yeah.
Whatever that road is, I don't know the name of it.
That was Murdoch.
Okay, it is Murdoch. Like actually closed that to vehicular traffic between Grove and the next one up?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Is there any possibility of putting vendors or whatever on the lawn within the curved driveway of Old Center to give you more space for additional trucks or?
I suppose that, I suppose that would be an option. It's not something we looked at. Last year, the park was definitely plenty big enough for all of the trucks to fit. This year, we have quite a few more. So we'll have to see how things lay out as we're setting them all up and make sure. But I suppose that is a possibility I had not thought of. So thanks for the suggestion.
You're welcome. Anything further from the board? I want to turn a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve a one-day liquor license for four Phantom's Brewery, Brewery Company for the Winchonan Food and Truck Festival, GIR Park on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three from four to nine PM.
Second.
Maiden seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Moving on. Six point one, the CPAEC, Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee, Commission.
Committee.
Committee, thank you. A determination. Mr. Saltzback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Romanowski wasn't able to join us this evening and he does send his regrets. But he sent this communication on because the group has met one more time since the special town meeting to kind of discuss the process, discuss some of the feedback that they received. And their takeaway, I think, was that overwhelmingly it seemed that while in that moment there wasn't support, there was an undercurrent of folks saying that this sounds like a great idea, it's just not the time at the moment. And so I think the takeaway from the committee was, or their ask here is that they'd like to continue their work, continue to meet regularly and continue to kind of, I guess, feel out in the community what they, what they feel might be a good fit for Winchonan and when. That aside, Mr. Romanowski has also expressed that he will be stepping aside. He does currently serve as the chair, but he would like to scale back his involvement. So the rest of the committee, in terms of members I've spoken with, are willing to carry the torch forward. They will be reorging with the board's blessing.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Yeah, I would also, I'd commend the members for staying with this. I personally believe financially, financially, it's a good idea. And I know it didn't pass a town meeting and didn't pass by, it failed by quite a bit. But I think financially, it's a good deal for the, the town. Unfortunately, it's not the time. So I would encourage them to stay with it, but I would also encourage them not to be looking to the fall town meeting or maybe not even looking at the spring town meeting to bring this back. The townspeople are going to be facing possibly a new fire station article in the fall. We also, they're going to have to pay for that water line into town that they approved. So I just think, stay with it, but don't come back for at least a year and a half.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
I would like to thank Mr. Romanowski for all the work and time that he's put into this committee.
Agreed. Anything else? All right, thank you very much for that update. Uh, six point two, a proposal for Civic Engagement and Belonging Committee. This is a request by Molly Velasco.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the record, please state your name.
Molly Velasco.
Abby Bradley. Good evening to the Board of Selectmen and the fellow residents of Winchonan. I want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak about something very near and dear to our hearts. We're here today to propose a formation of a civic engagement and belonging committee. Over the last three plus years that I've been part of community work in this town, I've observed the challenges of getting a wider representation of people involved in local civics and providing support they need to fully engage and feel a sense of belonging. We currently have some resident rock stars that are truly dedicated, so much of their time to the town. However, typically, it seems that eighty percent of the work is done by twenty percent of the people. And this means that if when, if and when someone steps down, they're stepping down from two to five committees at a time. And then that leaves a influx of seats open. So to avoid this, residents need to know how to get engaged. When I first moved back to the area, I never thought I'd be as involved as I am now. I had lived in big cities my entire adult life and due to my career and just lack of understanding of how simple it was to join, I didn't. That was until a very civically-minded individual in Winchonan, Miranda Jennings, encouraged me to apply and help me navigate the first set of steps. And that's how I joined the cultural council. And in my biased opinion, it's one of the lightest lifts in our town committees regarding meeting times and one of the most joyful, because who doesn't like giving free money away to the arts? It's great. Yet we have so many seats open and sometimes obstacles to involvement are as simple as not knowing what options are available for residents to participate in and how to get started, right? I know you detail it out on the website, but I think we can all agree that it's slightly confusing if you have no idea and have never navigated these systems. This is also one of the goals that aligns with the Winchonan Master Plan CE four, increasing level of civic, of citizen participation in town government. And lastly, I've noticed that, and experienced, the lack of support once people get involved. So we don't currently have a process or support for anyone that's new to civic engagement. Yes, we onboard new members and we have amazing chairs, shout out to Jill Sackett back there. But that doesn't mean that people are going to instantly feel comfortable speaking up. And that also doesn't mean that those that are well-versed in these processes know how to leave space for new people so they feel like they can contribute. This is especially true when looking at the disparity in populations for those that identify as historically underrepresented groups of people. And if we have someone who needs special accommodations, there's currently no official mentoring structure in place. And I found that when youth join these committees, I sit next to them intentionally and quietly explain what we're talking about or what various things mean so they can follow along. And I'm going to actually let Abby speak a little bit more about the youth perspective on that.
Good evening. I'm Abby Bradley. I have lived in Winchonan my whole life. I'm an upcoming senior at the Winchonan School. Prior to my time there, I was in the Winchonan Public Schools. I've been on many different committees in town because I'm passionate about supporting and making changes in town to support youth. I'm especially interested in the environment, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and mental health. When I first joined town committees, I didn't know what the processes were in meetings and certain words were not explained to me. For example, I didn't know what a quorum was. Now I very much do. But in general, I just didn't feel like I could speak during meetings. When I did try to speak, I'd be told we couldn't do X, Y, or Z and was often brushed off. I also sat on committees where adults are making decisions about youth, for youth, while youth sat quietly in the room. A lot of adults in town, while well-meaning, do not understand how to get youth participation and they had us in the room to get that perspective, but they just didn't ask. I got the feeling that I was just there to fill a youth seat as per the guidelines, but what I said didn't matter and I was expected to just be there. Ultimately, I took a step back and looked for alternative ways to enact change, but I was still disappointed in my committee experiences. Working with nonprofits and being a part of the decision-making processes has made me grow as a leader and when given the space, which I was in my role in HEAL, I really did grow and now will be the next director of the Winchonan Youth Changemakers. We printed out a picture of the ladder of participation which you can find in front of you. At the bottom, you can see that those rungs are more about tokenism and using youth as decoration. As you move up the ladder, youth are empowered to be more included in the processes. As we look at the two rung, two top rungs, you see youth initiated and directed. An example of this would be our teen fright nights at the library this past fall. We picked the dates, time, and movies and told our advisor what we needed. Then you have youth-initiated shared decisions with adults. An example of this is Taste of Winchon, which I know you all support. The great thing about the top rung is actually youth and adults working together. That is the actual goal.
Thanks, Abby. Abby's experience doesn't apply to just youth, though. This could be anyone from someone with learning or intellectual differences, those of different education or socioeconomic backgrounds. It could be for those that had just never been welcomed in these types of spaces before or never knew how to join. Equally so, the ladder of participation can be similarly applied. It was these observations and stories like Abby's and many other different, various identities and age group people in this town that led me to think about how we can create space and support all voices in this important work of supporting Winchonan. It was actually your very own Rick Ward to spark the idea by casually telling me about a situation where someone with a lot of experience on a committee was acting as a mentor and coach in their specific topic to someone who had never served. That resident can now participate fully with the support that he has received. And it sounded a lot like what I had been doing with the youth in the community for the last several years and has also helped create a strong group of civically-minded teens in town. My proposed solution to these obstacles is a civic engagement belonging committee and their potential mission would. and their potential mission would be initiating practices that build a wider representation of the Winchonan community, intentionally including the changing demographic population, communicating a menu of civic engagement options for various entry points, actively seeking diverse members to fill seats on various committees in town, provide training and supports for these committee roles that create equitable opportunities for all members, develop support for those new to civic engagement, and build relationship and trust with other committees to lend itself to those bodies to continue creating environments that are welcoming and inclusive of all. And I know what you're going to say, like, we're going to join and start another committee, and we can't fill the other ones, but this one is something that people, it very much aligns with the work we're already doing in Heal with Mr. Ward and the town manager. And it's also something that we are supporting in our work with Heal, and we have many people that we've lined up that are really interested in it. Upon reflection and through during this work in town, and other institutions and organizations, I know this would help fill the gaps and create a stronger sense of community and belonging for all residents in Winchonan. As part of the structure and formation of this committee, I do think it would be beneficial to have a representative or two from the Board of Select, and we need to just remove barriers and create support to ensure success for new members of various boards. And if we want everyone to come to the table and have a voice, we need to create some space and support for that to happen. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. You and I had talked a little bit.
Yeah.
A week so ago. I think it's certainly topical, you know, at this stage of the game, as far as society and economics and such. We are seeing a change in the demographics of Winchonan, and I think it's so important that we start tapping those untapped resources for these committees and these boards and everything else like that. Do you envision this committee being made up of adults and students?
Yes, so we'd want multiple demographics. Yeah, youth. So we would want, you know, all various age groups, so that way we can make sure that, you know, various voices are being respected and heard, and like model the change that we want to see on committees. I would never, like, propose that other committees, you know, involve youth and not do it myself. But yeah, I think when I've seen them, they're really passionate, and they have creative ideas about how to engage people. And they've been great about, like, getting people to show up. I mean, with the teen movie night, they had, like, thirty days' notice, and they got a hundred and one teenagers to show up on the library lawn, so.
And do you see this committee as appointed by the board or by the town manager? Or how do you see the formation of the committee?
I think it would be similar to, like, the Cultural Council. I think it's important that people come before the board and show that they're going to show up, right? And then also answer questions from, you know, this body, and the town manager, and others. Because I think, I think that's a good system, and I think that shows that initial first step that people are willing to make to actually serve the town and show up.
Yeah, that sounds great. I'm also thinking, I know that they teach civics in the eighth grade, is it eighth grade?
Yes, the eighth grade curriculum at Murdoch.
It would be wonderful to tie in with the teachers of those classes and draw those students in as well.
And it very much aligns with what we're doing in Heal. So we did do a pilot program with Candace Frye, who was a teacher at Murdoch. Yes, and so her class helped us plan Taste of Winchonan last year. This year, they started helping with the D. R. trip that everyone's currently on, building a school in the Dominican Republic. So we've kind of, like, piloted this, and now it's trying to embed it in the middle school and at all different levels. And you've also seen it even at Toy Town with the younger kids with their Skillshare and their Youth Changemakers. This year, they were donating funds and treats and toys to shelters, so that dogs could have comfort while they're in their transition.
I was privileged to be invited to sit on that judging board and listening to their ideas, and it was very good, very impressive.
Yeah, so as much as we can incorporate it, and I think that's what we're trying to do with this, right? Like, the point of Heal is not to exist forever, actually. The point of Heal is to embed these programs in institutions and bodies that already exist, so that way, when Heal dissolves, because we're so economically empowered, we have access to healthy food, we are socially inclusive of all residents, that these programs will continue to live on. And that's what we're trying to do here, is embed the work that we've been doing with Mr. Ward more in the actual structure of the town.
Thank you, thank you very much. Open it up to questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward.
So we're very familiar with this group, myself and town manager, Justin, D. E. I. B. We meet with them quite often. Sometimes I'm the only one there, and it's very challenging. But they're always respectful, we're respectful to one another. We have somewhat different ideas, of course. I come from a generation, probably seven, you know, fifty years more than theirs. But we have one common thing. We both want to get more involvement in the town. You know, I've been saying this forever. We need to get more people on the committees, but not the same people over and over. You know, one person shouldn't be on six committees in town because nobody will step up. We should have candidates where there's choices on every ballot, and we should have maximum attendance at the town meeting. So my goal has always been, and I presented to D. E. I. B., is I want more people. And granted, they're more concerned with demographics than I am. I just want numbers stepping forward. But they have the enthusiasm and the eagerness to do what generally we're not doing. They're going to reach out and contact people and try to get them involved. So I commend them for that. I commend them for the enthusiasm, and it even makes me a little bit more enthusiastic going to their meetings. And I thank you for that.
And I thank you for being such a great example of being brave in discomfort and really trying to push this work forward, because ultimately, like, having more representation, regardless of who it is, it will get more people involved, like, by helping people that haven't historically been welcomed into these spaces or know how to, like, more people will follow. And it really does, like, show that, like, it benefits everyone. When we look at people who maybe have been overlooked and, like, not participated in the past, it gets everyone from that point up to also be involved, too.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. LePoint.
So, few things, and I'm probably going to ramble. Your comment, well, wholly one hundred percent accurate about teaching civics, and you were trying to think of this specific grade. It's accurate and it's disgusting, right? That we only have that focus. This is not a criticism of you, Madam Chair, but that we only have that focus in one grade level in our curriculum. It's something that should be taught every year, year in, year out, beginning as early as possible. And I feel like this committee is trying to achieve just that. We need to include more youth and not just give lip service to them. We say we want more youth involvement, but then when they are involved, we just poo-poo them, in my opinion. We need more youth, we need more blend of races, we need more blends of gender identity, and it needs to not just be a head nod and lip service. So I think this really tries to get at what we need. And what Molly said about being brave in discomfort, I think it, you know, the more it becomes a norm, the more we're going to get that engagement that we need, and not just that lip service, and not just the, oh, well, we're doing this because we have to, right? We need a community to lead our town forward when we go, and it's them. And what reason do they have to do it when we just keep kind of shoving them away? So I just, I applaud you guys, I commend this, I am one hundred percent behind it. I'm sure I didn't say everything I wanted to say, but it's just a huge endeavor, and it's so incredibly important, and I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything you need from us at the moment?
Just your support to kind of go forward and start coming up with, you know, I know we will have to look at, like, governance and all of those kind of things, like, looking at, like, advisory at this point. You know, we're in the beginning stages. I didn't want to get too ahead of myself, but I want to be organized and have it, make sure that it aligns with the town. I don't want this to be, like, another thing. I want it to, like, make sense for all points of the plan and the master plan, and have it, like, actually genuinely incorporated into the town.
Anything further from the board? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would say that's a yes, you have our support.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair? Just in terms of action items.
Yes.
Would you like to hash out what that committee would look like now? Or would you like to put it on a future agenda in terms of, you know, five individuals, seven individuals? How would you go about appointing them, advertising?
I would like to wait and see, get input from the developers of that committee to see what mix they feel would be appropriate and be guided by.
My understanding is they're still researching, and they wanted our initial support.
Thank you, though. I will entertain a motion to take seven point two out of order, if anybody cares to make that motion.
So moved.
I will second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Daniel Main, you've been waiting very patiently. Seven point one's going to be a little involved, so would you care to come forward, please, and tell us what you're doing?
Hi, my name is Daniel Main. I've been a resident of Winchonan all my life. I'm sixteen. I'm the senior patrol leader for our troop here in town. I'm here to present my Eagle Scout project to the town and get permission to put it in Grouse Park. I wanted my Eagle project to be personal, something close to home for me. My mom inspired it to be military-related, as I was never really into sports or anything like that, and I have my brother who's in the military right now, my uncle who was in the military for over twenty years. So, yeah, I've talked to Kevin Gothier, Coral Grouse, and Justin here about putting it in Grouse Park. I think that'd be just the best location for it, as anyone going to the veterans cemetery would be passing this. It would, did I ever say what it was?
Not yet.
That's okay.
It's a gold slash blue star monument. And again, very close to home, as my family is a blue star family, and then all the several gold star families in town. I've estimated that it's maybe going to cost around four to six thousand dollars. All the fundraising would be coming from myself. I've already started fundraising with red shirts, rare red Friday shirts. Those I have soon. I hope to complete this by Memorial Day of two thousand and twenty-four. I have pictures of Grouse Park that can be passed around with areas, precious, open field, and I have pictures with, like, my inspiration of it, what I pass this to.
What it would look like, okay. Yeah, just. Perfect, thank you. And this would be a monument that, as additional families become, unfortunately, gold star and blue star, the names would be added to the monument, so it would be like a rolling, a rolling list, or what are your thoughts on that?
Just because of, like, the amount of blue star families, I thought that it would cost a lot to do that.
Okay.
Instead, I would rather have just a nameplate and have it, like, explain what a blue star or a gold star family is. That way, I don't have to sadly add on to the list.
And it just recognize all blue star families and all gold star? Okay, very good. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward.
I want to commend you for that, for what you're doing. My grandmother was a gold star mother, and unfortunately, those people get forgotten. And I think this will be a good reminder that, you know, there are a lot of gold star mothers, particularly during World War Two in this town, and World War One. And I look forward to seeing this completed. What is this going to be made of?
I was having it planned to be made, like, some kind of rock with a piece of brass or metal on top of it that has all the engravings on it.
And this will be secured to the ground?
Yes.
Okay, because we have some people who don't respect a lot of things, and I just want it to be preserved. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that's just examples.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. LePoint.
Not everybody can do it, but I like to think that we should strive to leave our mark, right, on where we've been, and just, just what a great idea to leave your mark and your family's mark on a town you grew up in, and I think you guys take pride and love in, so good job.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Anderson?
I think it would be nice if you would explain to the people who are watching at home exactly what a blue star and a gold star mother or family is.
A gold star family or a mother is someone who has lost a family member in active duty, and a blue star family is someone who has active duty members.
Serving currently. Yep, active duty family members, yeah. Anything further from the board?
No, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Absolutely, very, very. Anything you need from us at this moment? Daniel?
I don't believe so. I'll, like, call my manager up here.
So in order for him to present.
Just pull the mic around, so you, yeah.
In order for him to present his Eagle project to the Heart of New England Boy Scout Council, he needs somebody to act as the town, because you will be the recipient receiving his Eagle project. So once his paperwork is all filled out, I would assume we would go to Justin.
Yep, go through the town manager, yep.
And then when the project is finished, somebody also has to sign off on his project, stating that it is finished to your standards.
All right, perfect, yeah. Whenever you're ready for the next step, reach out to town manager. Mr. Saltzback will be here for another few weeks, but after that, just reach out to that office and absolutely any support you need. Mr. Crowdo?
If Public Works can assist in the installation at all, just please reach out. We'll be more than glad.
Mom, I know you are too, but I'm crying.
Mr. Ward?
I just, and when you do get this project finished, also let us know your progress. But when you get it finished, I'd like to know, I'm sure everybody else would like to know, so we could be there.
Yes.
When you dedicate that monument. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Backtracking just one item to seven point one, Pace, Massachusetts. Mrs. Saltzback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Included in your packet this evening is a memo kind of highlighting what this program does. It's run through the Department of Energy Resources in partnership with Mass Development, who the town has worked a lot to help kind of get some projects off the ground in town. They help remove obstacles, in this particular instance, financial obstacles. And so the Pace program effectively would allow a property owner to make an investment in the property by, in so many words, leaning it onto their tax bill. So they wouldn't have to go out and get a loan, for example, or traditional financing. Where they need the town's partnership is that we are the ones that control the tax bill and issue the tax bill. So they have assured us, because one of my concerns from where I sit is that it would create additional work for the treasurer's office or somewhere else, or financially, there could be something that goes wrong, and the town would, you know, be stuck with something here. It's managed entirely by the state. They exclusively just need the blessing from the Board of Selectmen. It is an act currently in place in the Commonwealth where other municipalities can't participate. So the benefit is, by example, if you were to pick.
Excuse me, do you have the powerpoint?
Oh, yes.
That might help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And as I pull it up, so by example, if there were a property in town that that would benefit from adding solar to the roof, for example, and if financially it just didn't quite make sense for the property owner to make that investment in the property, this would be a good opportunity, because it would provide an additional avenue for them to move through on that. And so I'm not going to go through this point for point, but at your leisure, if anybody just wants additional information. But as you can see, in Fiscal Twenty-One, for example, Mass Development financed four hundred and sixteen projects, generating more than one point eight six billion in generating more than $1.86 billion in the Massachusetts economy. And so I think when we're looking at the broader economic development picture here in Winchonan, having just an additional outlet like this, even if it got one extra project off the ground and made it more appealing for one developer is worth its weight in gold. But once again, I'll reiterate, it costs the town nothing financially or in terms of our resources. So just scrolling down quickly.
And just to clarify, this is for businesses, nonprofits?
And housing initiatives. So, and those are three areas where we have a lot of that in town or a need for that in town.
But not a particularly individual homeowner?
Correct, so yeah, yeah, single family residents or a smaller multifamily, four units or under would not be able to participate.
Thank you, just want to clarify, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. LePointe.
Scanning through really quickly, am I seeing correctly or am I misunderstanding that the property, property associated with this would have a betterment attached to their taxes?
Correct. So rather than paying a loan through a bank, for example, it would just be something that's tacked on to the real estate tax. But the benefit is for people that privately own these buildings, sometimes they're hesitant to make that investment because they have no, no definitive guarantee that they're going to recoup that investment if they have to go sell it. But if they go through this avenue, that expense is attached to the property. So when they sell it, the expense just goes on to whoever ends up taking the property over.
Which could be a private owner still, right? A private owner could buy one of these properties and then have to finish paying off their better...
At that point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear and understood.
So the expense stays with the property rather than the owner. But the benefit also stays with the property rather than the owner.
Thank you. I just hadn't had a chance to read through it yet, I apologize.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Ward.
Yeah, this may be getting into the weeds, but I know this says you, there would not be, generate any additional reporting or tasks for the town departments. So my question is these private capital providers, these are the ones that I guess are extending the money. So a private capital provider extends financing and they are repaid via better assessments collected by the town or the municipality.
Correct.
So when it comes to us, do we have to take the assessment part and send it to this private capital provider?
So that was a concern I had too, because I didn't want to have our treasurer's office have to go through parcel by parcel and make sure that the payment that came in went to that specific person. They, the Pace program reconciles it, gives us a lump sum number monthly or quarterly. And then we just send that whole amount. They're the ones that will actually do the administrative work of breaking it out and making sure it goes to the right people. Because I didn't want our team to be responsible, God forbid, if a payment was given to us and then we assigned it to the wrong account or something and somebody loses their property or investment because of something we did, but that's not the case. So it's excellent question, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I think my, my concern is understanding that I think the program might be, might be good in theory, but I'm always concerned that somebody might abuse it at some point. And, and the thing that bothers me the most is, say, a company or something owns a substantial amount of land. And through the Pace program, could they put in a solar field rather than improve the building? Because, you know, I really am opposed to cutting down any more of our woodlands to put in solar fields because that really is not green energy.
So this program, and if you go through the slideshow they provided, is about revitalizing underutilized existing assets and structures. So it couldn't be somebody that owns a bunch of, you know, forested land or agricultural land or golf course or something and then they get money through the Pace program to put in a solar field. That wouldn't be an allowable application.
That would not be.
Correct.
Correct.
Because...
Just saying eligible properties would be existing buildings and new construction.
But could they, could they say, if your existing building is on five acres of land and they want three of those acres to become solar and you have to cut down the woodlands to make that solar? That's my concern. That, that, you know, people find loopholes and I can't tell you how sad it makes me to go by places and see these solar fields that used to be woods.
I agree with you. And the other piece on that unfortunately is that if it's privately held property, they're allowed to by right. And that, that's a hard part. But I would say that, you know, if your concern is that having this in place would make it easier for people to do that, I do not believe that to be the case, if that helps easier concerns.
Well, yeah, I think that's my concern. I don't want to make it easier for them.
What's, do you have a sense of what the application process is at the state? So they would apply to the state for this, correct?
Apply through the state, yeah. So it, the only thing the town is doing is allowing the program to exist. We wouldn't have to do anything administratively.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. LePointe.
Are there any reasons you know of that we shouldn't allow it?
I could not list one. I'm actually surprised. I mean, it's a relatively new program. It started in 2020. But I'm surprised that, you know, it's something we haven't come across yet.
Well, I have to, there's a slide here that says Connecticut passed the Pace legislation in 2011. So it's been around for over a decade.
But in Mass, it's been since 2020.
Correct, in Massachusetts, it's just getting started, yeah. It says, what, 30, 30 states have it plus DC. Okay. Anything further, any questions, thought? All right, if there's no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with Pace, Massachusetts, by signing the attached Pace, Massachusetts Municipal Assessment and Assignment Agreement included in this evening's packet and to further vote to approve the included vote slash resolution authorizing the town of Winchonan to participate in the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Program.
Second.
May I second it to approve? Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, abstained.
I'm going to vote no. I don't think that I've researched it enough. And that's on me.
Thank you very much. Next up, summer schedule of board meetings, typically July and August. We only hold one per month, provided nothing major happens. You never know. So the proposed dates are July 10th and August 14th. Any thoughts, comments? You don't need a motion.
We reserved the right to call more meetings should the interim town manager who comes and need us for any reason whatsoever.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. LePointe.
Also, should we feel we want more updates from whoever the interim is? I was, I was going to say something very similar to that.
Yes, so perhaps we say regular, our regular summer schedule will be July 10th and August 14th, with any additional meetings called as required.
Right.
Okay. Sound good?
Sounds perfect.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, review of Robinson Broadhurst Grants Award. Mr. Salzback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll keep this brief attached. In your packet this evening is the breakdown from the 2023 Robinson Broadhurst requests. So as highlighted in the memo, there were a lot of good initiatives that they were able to put forward this year. There's a couple that are put on hold. So just to note, some notable emissions included funds for the exterior of the barn at Winchonan Community Park. But I will highlight that that received funding through the 2024 capital plan as well as some leftover funds from the amphitheater project from the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation. So it wasn't quite a negative there. Also, a $270,000 request for design funds for Blair Square. So the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation in the past has committed resources, the early design stage for Central Street, for example, and it is one of their major tenants to provide support for infrastructure projects. So the town has to date footed a majority of that bill. We are presently on the tip. It's going to be about a two to two and a half million dollar job for the construction side of things, but we need to find a way to continue paying for the design. And so that may be something they could review in future years if there's an additional funding source. But that may potentially set things back a year. So just to be mindful of.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to highlight the third. There was a three-year request that would fund roughly one-tenth of the water main replacement project. That one unfortunately was not approved. And so I just want to, I would like to highlight to this room, to this community that in particular, I found that to be fairly disappointing. But I'd also like to stress that that doesn't mean the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation doesn't do a lot for this community. And I think some people may take it that way. I think disappointment is a human emotion and people are permitted to feel it. So I'm expressing my disappointment that they're not participating in that project at this time. I have spoken to several members of the organization on multiple different levels within the organization. And they have expressed interest in exploring it in future years, maybe in a smaller amount. And so that would provide an opportunity to pay debt down faster. Where if you're at the earlier end of the loan, just for some, some quick financials for folks, even if they made a $200,000 contribution in the first year of having that loan, you'd save about $80,000 in compounding interest over the 20-year life of the loan. And so even something like that would be significant. So I'd continue the community to stick with it. I would also note that there were four items that looked like they were denials, but they were actually approved through a surplus in the amphitheater construction budget. So that includes fireworks for the grand opening, the LED message board at the park entrance, the security system for the Winchonan Community Park, and the full-time rec coordinator salary for fiscal '24. So just to be mindful of that as well. And to break down the others, they approved eight other requests, some in reduced amounts. That includes a first-year installment for the fire department, air packs, a Volvo backhoe for the DPW cemetery expansion that we've discussed, enrichment activities for the schools, additional financial support for the Beals Memorial Library, infrastructure upgrade, holiday decorations and summer concert series support for the recreation department, a new transportation van for Meals on Wheels for the Council on Aging, and a contra, or excuse me, a contribution to Fall Fest. And lastly, $50,000 for the Gateway Park at Spring and Beach Street, which I should note with the official sale of the house going through down there, hopefully people have seen, there's new siding, a new driveway and we've really made progress. But a lot of the proceeds of that sale are covering the cleanup and some base level improvements down at the park. That $50,000 from Robinson Broadhurst, as they like to say, would be the icing on the cake. So it's going to allow you to really do something significant and special down there. So in closing, the generosity and partnership of the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation is greatly appreciated sincerely. I would encourage this group to continue working with Robinson Broadhurst Foundation to ensure that we have the strongest partnership possible. And I think to help, help better inform their decisions as they go through their process, just so the community make sure they advocate for themselves and make clear what their, their own priorities and needs are. Because I think that's, that would be most helpful to the organization.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
So I just, I just want to point out to the public, because we're talking here basically town hall initiatives when we look at this approval. But what people don't realize, because we hear about this, you know, we talk about what we put in for, what we get approved, how much we got. But outside of this town hall, the Robinson Broadhurst every year gives money to all sorts of organizations. The churches in town get money. I think Heal got money from Robinson Broadhurst. Boy Scouts get money. Winchonan Winds over at the Unitarian Church, they get money. So this year alone, they gave $1.2 million to the town of Winchonan. So I think we should be grateful. We should be grateful that Anna and Avery Robinson were born in Winchonan, graduated from Murdoch and loved this town until their dying day and thought of us in their wills. So I thank them.
Absolutely, thank you. Anything else on this item? Thank you, Mr. Salzback. We, 7.5, we have a sponsorship to be accepted for movie night and community day at the Winchonan Community Park. Sponsorships totaling $3,100. Would you care to come forward, Ms. Newton?
Hello.
Good evening.
So we had sent out a new sponsorship packet for 2023 to help sponsor some of the upcoming events that we have this season. And so far, we have received seven sponsorships to cover our movie nights. And we've received two $500 sponsorships for community days.
Very nice. And we have, I know you're halfway down the list, BoV Insurance for $300. Fidelity Bank for $600 for two movie nights. Winchonan Furniture, $600 for two movie nights. By Light Unseen Media, $300 for a movie night. Tenny Remodeling, $300 for a movie night. Belltates, $500 for a community day. Matthew Ford, again, $500 for a community day sponsor. And that comes to the $3,100. That's wonderful, very, very good.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Could I just ask, it seems to me that several of those businesses have already currently donated. And this is not their first donation.
Yes, some of them have already donated to us.
I would just like to acknowledge that, that there are several businesses that have donated more than once to help the community.
Yeah, because the donations up so far have been towards the grand opening, correct?
Yes, all previous donations were spent on the grand opening on Saturday. And so some of the ones that you see multiples of, such as Matthew Ford and Fidelity Bank. Fidelity has, sorry, part of their new, I think some of their marketing and stuff is to be more community involved, so they have a, I don't know. Once that spoke came from Canada, I like lost my way. I'm so sorry. And then Matthew Ford, when they found out that we were doing sponsorships for the grand opening, they too specifically asked to be notified of any sponsorships going forward because they really wanted to help support the community with that.
Very nice. Questions, comments? We do this by motion, do we not?
Yes.
Mr. Ward, would you care to flip into that breach?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the following sponsorships. BoV Insurance, $300 movie night. Fidelity Bank, $600 for two movie nights. Winchonan Furniture, $600 for two movie nights. By Light Unseen Media, $300 for a movie night. Tenny Remodeling Inc., $300 for a movie night. Belltates, $500 for community day. Matthew Ford Sales, $500 for community day for a total of $3,100. And I would also add that we thank them deeply for their donations.
Thank you. Second, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. All right, 7.6, Colonial Power Group. This is a review of the energy aggregation and update. Mr. Salzback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just a follow-up from your May 22nd, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. I did send an email to the board earlier last week. Following up on the Colonial Power Group price energy aggregation that we had previously discussed, in particular, I'm happy to report we were able to secure a 24-month rate at under the .15 mark per kilowatt hour as requested. .15 mark per kilowatt hour as requested by the board. And as you can see on the attached pricing matrix, the official number is .1496. So that is well under National Grid's projected winter rate of .19, and it should result in a significant savings for the people of Winchon. As always, I'd like to highlight and encourage people to look at the broad view, because I know there are a couple of months where the rate that we had secured was slightly above where National Grid was. But if you look at the average over the course of the year, there is, actually, there ends up being a savings. And I would also like to point out that you can switch, so you're not obligated to stay with this provider. If you do find someone that's lower, you can switch. You can always come back, but this is just providing an additional option for folks.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from the board? Thank you very much. Moving on is the water and sewer rate discussion and vote for approval. Mrs. Saltback, whenever you're ready to get this started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we did bring this up in the previous meeting, and since then, DPW Director Corodo and I, and our town accountant Katie Medina have been working to try to determine some realistic costs for upcoming years for our water and wastewater enterprise accounts. So as we looked at this, we looked at past five years' expenses, comparing them to past five-year revenues. And as mentioned in the last meeting, we're trying to approach this from two places. So one is your typical day-to-day operations. So the report that we had put together by Raph Ellis in March of '22 did highlight and recommend and project out that once we got through that initial larger increase, 3% every year after for water and sewer would help you be able to better maintain your water and sewer enterprise funds. Because as you recall, you did have retained earnings. You ran deficits for several years that ate away at those retained earnings, and then we ended up being short two years in a row and had to supplement with free cash and ARPA. So that 3% is going to keep you on a steady path. It is not going to rapidly stockpile a lot of retained earnings. We're not looking to needlessly squirrel away people's money, but it's going to keep you from dipping underneath. So that's the first point. The second one is the, the funding necessary to cover the additional non-typical expense once in a generation of expense of replacing your water main from Ashburnham. And that's something we've been discussing as a community, well, well before I got to town, but we've made some good forward progress over the past year or two. And so the second piece is what is it going to cost to cover that debt service? And there's a little more to that that I want to break down so everybody follows. So the first piece is we are recommending a 3% base level increase for water for fiscal year '25 and '26 for general operating expenses. So just take that and set that aside. For the water main cost, it's a nine-and-a-half million dollar job, and we're looking at the following factors. So our team was able to secure roughly $2 million in loan forgiveness. It's actually, the figure is a percentage of what the total project cost is, so it's not a $2 million check, it's a percentage of whatever the total will be, but it's about $2 million. The second piece is half a million in ARPA funding that we've been kind of holding back and setting aside for this purpose to try to defray some of the costs. And the third, I would say, is another half million we can count on between value engineering and additional potential outstanding grant monies. So what that means is, you know, to a degree, we're fairly confident we're going to be able to pull that nine-and-a-half million dollar price tag down a little bit. You're partly dependent on the free market, and when you're going out to bid and where the cost is for supplies and materials. The other piece is we do have some outstanding grants that we're waiting to hear if they hit. And as I mentioned, the Robinson-Broderhurst Foundation may be willing to entertain in future years a smaller amount. So I think with all those things combined, conservatively, count on half a million. And so that leaves you with about six and a half million in terms of a funding gap. Everybody still with me? So with that six and a half million, now you want to take into account 2% compounding interest over a 20-year loan. So I just want to highlight that 2% in and of itself is a big win. Typically, when we go out, we're at about 4%, 4.5%. For a number that size over a 20-year loan to secure 2% interest from the state was a pretty significant accomplishment. And so we've determined that that 6.5 million plus compounding interest, it would be about a $400,000 annual payment to cover that expense for the next 20 years. So the conversation we've been having is how should that be broken down? Is that something that the rate payer should entirely, should entirely be on the hook for? Is the town responsible for picking up some of it? And I would very much leave that up to this board. What I tossed out here in the proposal is 50/50. And if you all wanted to debate that amongst yourselves, I encourage you to do so, but just for the sake of this math, 50/50. So now we're assuming that we'll need $200 in debt service in the town budget a year, which we can do. It's not going to break us, but we can do it, and it is going to restrict your ability over the next 20 years in terms of capital projects. So that's going to eat into other priorities that you have, just be mindful of that. The other $200,000, we're going to have to make up through the water enterprise account. And that kind of leads to this next piece. So you have your 3% for your annual year-over-year. We determined it would take a one-time 9% increase to cover that $200,000 a year.
Now, is that for FY '25 or FY '24?
FY '25. So '24, you just passed the annual budget for, so that's set.
Just wanted to clarify.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but they raised the rate for FY '24 last year, is that right?
Who's "they"?
We.
Yeah, the 3%.
They, because I voted no. How about that?
Yeah, okay. So, correct. So the board voted to raise it as recommended, you know, after you got through that, that initial bigger bump, there would be 3% every year thereafter, under normal circumstances.
No, I thought the motion was, because Danielle made the motion. Yeah, you did.
For water? I don't think I made the motion for water.
Yeah, you made the motion to raise the water rate, whatever percentage was recommended for FY '23, and then there was a lesser amount for FY '24.
It was '23 and '24, correct?
Correct. That was the motion. So what we're looking at here is a potential raise for FY '25.
'25 and '26, yep.
And why are we doing this now?
I knew that question was going to come, and I'm very happy to answer it.
Please do.
So, so the reason we're doing that now is because we're trying to figure out how to make a nine-and-a-half million dollar once-in-a-generation expense work in this budget. And that's the most important thing. And so that $2 million, $2 million in loan forgiveness and the 2% interest, that is from the state, and we need to commit to that. So we can't just say, oh, we're not really ready, now's not really the time, because they will move on without us. And that was hard fought. We were, as you recall, and for anybody watching in the community, the state initially denied us. They put us on the draft list, and our team did not respond well to that, and we ended up getting it reversed through a partnership with members of Congress, members of the State House delegation. And if you recall, thinking back to January, there were a lot of long nights for me, but especially the gentleman sitting behind me, where our reserve tank, which I think is, what, a 25-foot reserve tank, was down to nine feet. So, and we were having conversations about having to turn it off and stop pumping water uphill to some people. And so the question of why are we doing this right now is because we need to provide a commitment to the state to show that we plan and intend to fund this.
All right, so let me, let's go back. $2 million is already secured. We voted on it, and the town voted on it, correct?
Roughly, for the forgiveness?
Right.
Yes.
And then the $500,000 is secured.
Correct.
The $500,000 between value engineering and additional potential grant monies.
Not secured.
Not secured. But shouldn't we find out what is out there and secure it before we go ahead and raise this rate?
Oh, you, you can't wait for that because it's not a guarantee. So I, I mean, if you hit, I hesitate to put a number out there. So by, but for, just for the sake of example, if you were to hit every single one of the irons that we presently have in the fire right now, it'd probably bring in about an extra million. I do think conservatively, you know, I think $500,000 is a conservative number. But I guess what I'm trying to get at is we're not needlessly putting out a number that's higher than it needs to be. And, you know, if there's some type of windfall down the road, if somebody comes in and drops $5 million on the table and says, this is for the water pipe, then you could probably revisit it and pull that number back if you really wanted to.
Has that ever happened historically, ever?
No, but, but I'm saying, but I guess what I'm saying is like, if that's the point you're trying to get at, it's well taken. But working within the reality of what we have right now, I would say that this is, like, we're, there's no fluffing here. We're not trying to take in any extra. We're really going bare bones on this one, just trying to scrape by. And I get, if, did you have any other thoughts on that before I continue my thought?
Yeah, because I kind of interrupted you there, so that there's more of your, of the proposal.
No, because I had to understand it as you moved along.
So, so the other part, to genuinely show that we're not just like passing the buck here and saying, here's the bill. So the other things we listed, our team fought really hard for, that could have not been a factor. We could just be saying, we need to make up, sorry, we need to just make up nine-and-a-half million dollars, but now we're saying we need to make up six and a half. So that's something to be mindful as well. But the other piece is in order to try to soften the hit of that water increase, we're proposing a 0% increase in sewer for the upcoming fiscal year, and that's important for several reasons. One of them is the sewer rate in and of itself is higher than the water rate.
Way higher.
Yep. So if you're talking about 3% for water and 3% for sewer, in terms of real-world dollars, you're bringing in way more on that 3% for sewer. We've crunched the numbers and determined that, you know, with relative certainty, we can waive that for this year.
No, 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 next year.
This year, FY '25 is coming too.
Fiscal '25, yes. So I would say that that, I don't want to say it's against my better judgment. Typically, I'd say like, you know, err on the side of caution here. So I guess what I'm trying to illustrate is that that's a little less conservative than I typically would like to be, but in the interests of making sure we're not squeezing people to death, we've, we've put that on the table just to show that like, we're really trying to make this work for people. And so when you're looking at the numbers and if you break it down by not raising sewer for fiscal '25, the total cumulative increase comes in at about 86 cents per 100 cubic feet. So if you were to take that math a little bit further, and I'm sorry, we're doing like a big, big math push today, hope you all brought your calculators. So if you were to look at an average single-family residence, looking at the data, uses about 1,500 cubic feet per quarter. So that means that...
Quarter?
Per quarter.
Thank you.
So if this increase went through, it would result in an additional real-world expense of about $4.30 a month. And that's something I wanted to stress too, that we understand that water isn't the only thing people are seeing increases on these days. It's across the board, at the grocery store, housing, like everything. And, you know, understanding things are really tight, $4.30 a month in this current climate is actually, it's a really, really low number. And I know in an ideal world, the number is zero, and I get that, but we're trying to fix a nine-and-a-half million dollar water pipe. And when you look at that, $4.30 a month, plus typical operating costs, that's pretty competitive.
The $4, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The $4 amount is like the one-time 9% increase?
Everything total. So it's the 3%, the 9%, then taking into account the waived 0 for sewer, so...
Thank you, just making sure I follow.
No, yeah, there's, there's a lot of numbers. So, so what that boils down to is an average single-family home for fiscal year '25, so not this, this one we're getting into, but the one after, would be $4.30 a month. That would fund typical operating cost increase as well as the water pipe debt service. Also with the understanding that on the town side, the government is going to be picking up the other $200,000 a year of that within their budget.
And I see your comment about foregoing the increase by one year because of additional revenues projected to come in. I know Director Corodo, and we've talked about this before, how close to coming online is that?
So I appreciate the alley-oop on that. I almost left that on the table. So another piece of this puzzle is our team also trying to find ways to drive new revenues, which is something we've talked about a lot, and I think people have kind of taken, taken for granted or not, not quite bothered with. So the outside septicage piece presently isn't necessarily setting the world on fire, but it is additional income. And I would recommend maybe doing a review of that in the next couple of months and kind of breaking down those numbers. But that's one of the reasons, if any, where we felt a little comfortable floating a zero for fiscal '25 is because we're projecting fairly healthily closing out this year. We don't know what's going to come next year, but we're trending in that direction, and so we'll have a little bit of retained earnings built up. So even if we take a tiny dip in a worst-case scenario, it's not going to put you in the negative. You're going to eat into your retained earnings. But if you've learned anything from what happened previously, you can't do that every single year because you're going to run into a wall eventually. But we felt, just for the sake of trying to take a little bit of pressure off people, that was probably a good way to go about doing it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. LePoint.
And that's the bringing in the waste from other communities?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson. Um, I don't feel like I'm comfortable raising any rates at this point until I have an audit of the water sewer system. And the reason I say that is because over the weekend, I was made aware of a substantial billing error. And until I know that what is being billed, I mean, we can't project finances and forecasts without knowing in actuality that our system is working and properly. And then the other question, let me piggyback on that. The water meters that were paid for by ARPA funds, are they installed yet?
A majority, if not all, is that accurate?
That are supposed to be, you can tell right away when you're, when you have a water leak.
There's a multifaceted response to that, but I'll, I'll let Mr. Corodo take it.
It's all part of it, though.
Yep, I'll answer it all. So we have about 800 meters left. It's very difficult to get into some of these residents. We're trying diligently to get in, to get these swapped out. The meters that are being installed are your traditional meters. If you recall back to when the town manager was hired at his first town meeting, it was on the floor to replace the water meters with a better quality water meters that were cellular, and that was voted down at town meeting. So the meters that are going do not have this capability because the townspeople did not support it and vote for it.
But did, did we not put them through with ARPA funds?
Nope. The money that was put through with ARPA funds was only to do the traditional replacement of the water meter. The water meters that have the cellular capabilities were, were exceeding 600,000 to 800,000, and we didn't take that out of ARPA. We took just enough to do the traditional replacement because the townspeople did not support the cellular feature.
And then in terms of the other piece you have, the billing discrepancy that you're referencing, that I think we might be addressing later in the evening, so that's a, that's one instance of one specific bill, but something like that wouldn't impact what our expenses are, and our expenses continue to skyrocket.
But it impacts...
Revenues. It would impact, it would impact revenues, but if anything, that would say we're overstating our revenues, which we're not, we're in a tight spot for revenues. But the scenario you're describing would make us feel financially more confident when we're actually not. The other piece, though, is in terms of a full audit, when Raph Ellis did their secondary study, that involved the review of the financials. So that's one piece. The other one is when we do have our annual audit, so when you do a single audit, that's when you're doing a line-by-line of a specific department, but we still audit all of our departments. So, you know, if there was a significant discrepancy, it would have been flagged. But I do just want to reiterate, that second study that we did about a year or a little, well over a year ago now, did involve a full review of the financials.
Right, but I beg to differ. When Roselli and Clark does his single audit, he does a deep dive into that particular thing, as opposed to when he's doing each and every other account. It's, it's really, I don't want to say superficial, but it's not that deep dive.
It's one out of every 15 or 20 records as opposed to one out of every five or ten, five or six, yeah.
It's, it's, it's a big difference, and it is one of those things that I feel... It's, it's, it's a big difference, and it is one of those things that I feel, you know, and I, I have no idea what, you know, Raftellus did, but I'm assuming something very similar to our, our year, regular annual audit, where I need to look at and make sure that what we're billing, what we're expecting for revenues, and what we are expending out of these accounts is, is in fact what we can count on and rely on.
So, so the numbers that we have, you can count on and you can rely on. I can tell you that with a hundred percent confidence. There's one other component, though, that I'd highlight on, on the expense side, is even if there is a situation where Viola had, you know, was, was being negligent, and they were spending way more money than they had to, and they were charging us way more, we went out to the free and open market to see if any company would be willing to come to Winchon and do it for cheaper. And no one, no one even pulled a bid because they told us that there's no way they could turn a profit if they came here. And so if there was anything that would, that would be, you know, a canary in the coal mine moment, that's it.
It's more, my, my canary in the coal mine is more with our MUNIS system. Is our MUNIS system working properly as designed? Is, is it up to date?
It, it is, but that, but that wouldn't have any impact on the numbers that we're describing. That's one individual's tax bill.
But that's, that's the one that we know of.
And it's being rectified, so I just, I wouldn't want to cast aspersions about the accuracy of our billing.
Okay.
Yeah, so and Mr. Crowder, I think has something else you wanted to add.
So when Roselli comes in, they come into my office and we, we give them the breakdowns of the bills, and, and they're reviewed on a, on a yearly basis as well as the expenses. So I have to show the accountants, not only ours but theirs, what's coming in and what's going out. It's quite a lengthy process and it's, they, they do take a smaller deep dive in, but they see what is being, is being billed out and what is being collected.
Okay.
If, if I also could add to it-
Mr. Crowder?
If we waited for the big audit that Selectwoman Anderson wants, we, we will not be able to keep this, this funding. There's strict timelines in place that have to be met. Otherwise, we're going to lose this nine and a half million from, from the state, and then we're going to have to go back out to open bid at four and a half percent like the town manager said. And we, we won't have two million dollar forgiveness. This two, two million dollars of forgiveness comes with the state, with the package, with this two percent deal.
Thank you. Okay, more questions, comments from the board? Observations, Mr. Ward?
Okay, the way I look at it, and this, again, this is my personal way I view things. Town meeting, and, and I believe as a Board of Selectmen, we have to follow the dictates of the town meeting. Town meeting overwhelmingly approved this water line. I mean, we were all shocked by how easy it was approved. They were willing to take on whatever it takes to get this water line. They felt it was important. They were presented three different scenarios, funding all the way up to ten, almost eleven million dollars with interest, all the way down to three millions, which was quite a bit of dreaming at that time.
We like to aim high.
But what the town manager is presenting to us is sort of that middle of the road. And so, you know, I thank the town manager for coming in with what I think is a very fair plan to get us through this, and no one likes to see an increase, no one. But when you're looking at four dollars and thirty cents a month on that end for a nine and a half million dollar water line that's going to secure us for many years to come, if that line goes, we're in trouble. The townspeople said they want it. Now, I will bet, and I have no way of proving this, that a lot of those people who voted for it were water users. Because I'm certain a lot of well people said, this doesn't involve me, I'm voting no. So the water users want this. So I think we need to go with this because it's fair, it's equitable, and again, I thank the town manager for coming forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any other questions, comments from the board? If there are none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move increase to increase the water rates for fiscal year twenty-five by twelve percent, and for fiscal year twenty-six by three percent, and wastewater rates for fiscal year twenty-five by zero percent, and for fiscal year twenty-six by three percent.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there a second? I will second it. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. And no abstain, so it does pass by three to two. That one's done. Next up, we have personnel rules and regulations proposed amendment to six point one holidays. Mr. Salzback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Daigle has been working on this as one of her ongoing special projects in her post, post semi-retirement limbo era for the town of Winchon, and so I'll hand it over to her.
Good evening, everyone. So I reviewed the union contract for the clerical town hall, and I replaced the language because it was a little bit different. In the past, the personnel policy, people who are not union would have a different day off than the other people that are on the union. So we just, I took the language with the current union contract that's in negotiation. I believe it's just about finished, and grabbed that holiday schedule and replaced it in our personnel policies, rules and regulations, and you can see what I added and what was deleted in red.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions, comments from the board? Seems like just when you make all the changes to everything, you find something else that's different. Kind of an ongoing search. All right. Seen and hearing nothing further, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move to approve the personnel rules and regulations proposed amendment to six point one holidays as presented this evening, with the addition of Juneteenth, June nineteenth, and the few small edits which were included in our drop box.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Last in this section, we have a sewer abatement request for Thirty-One High Street due to a leak. We have, Mr. Crowder, anything you'd like to add to this?
Yeah, I was out on this property when this happened. It happened during the deep freeze over the, over the winter. The water line or meter froze, ran for about eight days. The water did not go down the sewer. The water went down a sump pump and into the catch basin. That's how we actually found it. We were called out for what we thought was a service line leak, and it wasn't. It was one house up and the basement was full of water, and it was coming down, down and out into filling Whitney's Pond. So the water was shut off and the, the abatement would be appropriate for this.
Thank you. And repairs have been made?
The repairs are made, yes.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? If there are none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I can't get this one to come up on my screen, but I think I got it.
Mr. Ward.
I move to approve the sewer abatement requests for Lauren Shelley, Shelley Properties, Thirty-One High Street, and I believe the amount's in one thousand five seventy-eight twenty-six cents.
One thousand five twenty-eight seventy-six cents.
Right, one thousand five twenty-eight seventy-six.
Fifteen twenty-eight seventy-six.
Ouch, he blew it up for you.
Yeah. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Old business. We have first up, change to a liquor license fee for the Farmer Series pouring license.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Calandella.
After clarification, speaking to the ABCC and at the request of the applicant, we're requesting that you would amend the motion that was made for the three hundred and fifty per license at the same location, if it does exist later. Some licenses are just for beer and wine and malt and spirits. This one has all three. So we're recommending that the first license be at three hundred and fifty dollars, and any additional licenses for the same premise be one hundred dollars, instead of the three fifty, three fifty, three fifty.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? So we would have to make this retroactive to that initial applicant?
They have not yet paid for those applications yet. We're still in limbo right now, so it would just be an amendment for the previous vote taken.
Just from the vote, okay. Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? If there are none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move the board amend the newly set fees for Farmers, Farmer Series pouring licenses, wines, malts, and distillery to three hundred and fifty dollars per license. However, if more than one Farmer Series pouring license is applied for at the same location, each additional license would be reduced to one hundred dollars per license.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Affirmation of vote for the transfer station rate increases. Mrs. Anderson pointed out a week or so ago that typically when it comes to enterprise funds, such as we just did with water and wastewater, rate changes are made by a vote of the board. And we had discussed the transfer station increases as part of the general budget discussion. We reviewed that the stickers would go from seventy to seventy-five for the first one, and then the trash bags would go up a quarter each, and the demolition material, another five dollars per ton. But we did not take a particular, a specific vote to make the changes to these rates under this enterprise fund. So I asked to bring it back this evening so we can just formalize the vote. Questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
I, I just, I don't, again, feel that enough has gone into the discussion of raising rates at the transfer station, even though it was pointed out to me that the budget was produced on the anticipated rates. There are a number of moving pieces that were never formalized. As in during our shared school and town meetings, we discussed having different town departments start using the transfer station rather than having-
The companies that come in?
Outside companies coming in to do that. That would change the anticipated income at the transfer station. The other thing is I was at the transfer station when it came to my attention that there were our people from different town departments who are dropping off those items at the transfer station that you can't put in a dumpster, like fluorescent light bulbs or whatever they might be wanting to get rid of. Well, that's done on the backs of the users of the transfer station. That also isn't fair. I don't know how long that's been going on, but I happened to witness it, and I brought it up, and I said, you can't do that.
Okay.
There's also been discussion about merging with other communities, and, and that would change the need for fees to go up, or if they have to go up. There's just a lot of moving parts that were never formalized with us.
Okay. Mr. Crowder?
So town departments do drop stuff off that aren't able to go in the dumpsters, and they're, and it's logged on the unbilled log, and it's billed back to each department, or it's taken out of the town line item for roadside trash.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. LePointe.
Did I hear you say that other towns were dumping?
No.
No.
That, that we have the possibility of merging with other towns.
I thought I heard you say other towns were dumping lights. Okay, thank you.
And then in terms of the other two points that you referenced, so we did have a productive conversation that I would encourage the group to follow through on about the possibility of removing the line items, several different departments in our general operating budget carry a line item for private outside services to come take trash, which just seems ridiculous to me since we can provide that service in-house. That said, the fiscal year twenty-four budget was, was based on the status quo in that area because we, it was at a point where we weren't ready to make that change organizationally or take that on. And so that's not something that would impact fiscal twenty-four. But the fiscal twenty-four budget is based on projected increased revenue from these rates as discussed in the budget. The second piece is the possibility of exploring, bringing in other communities and potentially charging those communities. I would offer the same thing. We couldn't have built a fiscal twenty-four budget off a possibility. That's going to be a several months-long conversation that, you know, if it even does hit this fiscal year, we don't have enough data to go back and realistically project what that would mean in terms of revenue yet. But, and I do agree with you, when and if that time comes, take a hard look at it, and it, and it could be, you know, you could float a zero for increases for a year or two, like you actually did last year. We didn't increase last year. So it's not even like we're, you know, rationing this up year over year over year. We've actually done a really good job of tightening our belt on that and keeping those numbers pretty reasonable.
One of the other points to add to that is, is that even if we do take in another town, there's still the same fee to truck our trash, to truck their, to truck their trash, so they pay the same fees as, as we would. All it means is we're going to have more, more volume. That's it.
But then, there's, there's another moving piece that I just thought of, that, that town meeting approved the, the roll-on truck or whatever you want to call it, which would also change revenues and expenditures coming out of this transfer station.
So we're not going to see that change, or we're not going to reap the benefits out of that truck fully in fiscal twenty-four because the truck was ordered after town meeting. It has to be built, then we, we have to accept it. So best case scenario, we probably see that truck November, December, so if, if anything, we're only going to reap half the year out of it. We still have to make a second investment once that truck comes in and get our own compacters. So if we do see a savings, it'll go back into purchase of the compacters. So as the town manager said, we, we would truly see the savings in fiscal twenty-five because then we'd have six months under our belt. We'll understand our, our in-house trucking costs. We'll understand all of that. But, but at this point, if we don't do these increases, I don't feel that we're going to be able to make budget at the transfer station.
And I don't, I understand that, you know, it was mentioned at one point, you know, the enterprise fund is solvent. It's in the black. I want to make sure it stays in the black. I, I don't want to repeat history here. I feel that it's, it's a relatively small increase, and we have to move forward based on, you know, what we know now, you know, these are the moving parts may come into play. And when they do, then we can come back and revisit it. There's nothing to say that we can't.
Because that happens.
Anything else from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
So first of all, I want to thank Selectwoman Anderson for spotting that we didn't vote on this enterprise fund. We vote for water rates- We vote for water rates, we definitely, this one slipped by. We do have to vote every enterprise rate, increase or decrease. And so, I remember when Brian presented this to us, and for some reason, we had our discussion, so somebody didn't do their due diligence and catch that, we didn't vote on it. But it went on, and we did approve, like it says, the budget, which included it. The town meeting voted it, which included it. Now, granted, it wasn't specified clearly, but it was there. So, all this is doing is trying to correct something that we, we as a board, and maybe the town also overlooked, and to sort of keep the books in line. Otherwise, I don't know how we go back and overrule a town meeting vote on the budget, our vote on the budget, to adjust for this. So, I would recommend we just do what we have to do to clean this up and move on, and make sure that every enterprise fund this board votes up or down.
Yeah, I went back and I watched the video from that meeting, and, you know, Mr. Crowe took us through the razors and stuff like that, and then we started talking about, you know, increasing revenue, and like for the next ten, twelve minutes, we talked more at a high-level, general discussion about, we're going to cut so far, we need to look at ways to increase revenue, and I never brought it back to, okay, you know, we need to come back and vote on this. So, I will take the, I will take the responsibility for not doing it then, but thank you. Anything further on this, on this item? Seen and hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to support the fiscal year twenty-four transfer station enterprise budget, based in part on the rate increase described above, to be effective July first, 2023.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Can we hold that for discussion?
Is that a second for discussion?
Sure.
Okay, yes, Mrs. Anderson?
Can I just state, though, you know, and this goes to the water rates as well, that when the town goes to town meeting, it does not come with, with a disclaimer that the rates are going to go up. It just says the board approved the budget. It doesn't say your rates are going to go up when they vote for it, the same for the transfer station.
These are separate articles on the warrant.
Right, but we don't ever say, but we expect the rates to go up twelve percent next year.
I'd have to look at the actual wording, but yeah, we could certainly make that change.
We don't say that, and we need to be very clear, because otherwise, people are voting for articles that they really are not given all the information that they're supposed to have.
Okay. Point taken. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. No?
No.
Abstain, thank you, does pass. It's four one. All right, Mr. Saltback, town manager's report, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some financial notes, we're in the process of issuing supplemental tax bills through the assessor's office, and this should help bring in a little additional revenue to close out fiscal year twenty-three. On the personnel side of things, there are no personnel changes at this time. For project updates, the old Murdoch restoration will officially be kicking off this week, as the contractor begins to mobilize to the site. And I will note that DPW Director Crowe and I have sat down, and I've, I've handed that off to him, so he's very well-versed on it, and you're, you're in good hands. Lane painting on Central Street is complete, great job.
Yes.
Part of me feels like we should maybe shut down traffic and do a ribbon cutting, but, but you know how that would go over on Winchandon residents, so maybe we won't. Beach street cleanup is continuing this month. We're waiting on an official remediation plan from the LSP for the content needed soil down there. We've received, excuse me, our new police cruiser from last year's capital improvement plan. There was an eighth-month delay, as I'm sure you've seen, particularly on vehicles. The fire station working group continues to meet, and we'll have an update for the Board of Selectmen at an upcoming meeting. The town hall copula restoration is complete, and the remaining budget will allow for the structure to be illuminated at night as planned, so that'll be really good.
Copula here and the, and the steeple at the church, that's going to look really nice.
Oh, yeah, playing off each other, it's going to, it's going to look real good. And also, worth noting, special thanks to Mr. Crowe for helping line that up. He's really settled into the and facilities portion of his potential new upcoming role. And then, a meeting was held with an architect to begin the process with the town hall east elevation restoration, as approved at the recent annual town meeting. So, as you may recall in the capital plan, just for the sake of putting less pressure on the budget, the group opted to take it side by side by side. So, I believe, so that would be the Cumberland Farm side, next year, I think, is Pleasant Street, and then Front Street, and then the back, if I'm recalling correctly. And then, Winchandon has been selected as part of the Massachusetts Broadband Institute Digital Equity Planning Program. Great work by all involved, including Linda Daigle, who spearheaded that effort as part of her special project assignment. And the grand opening for the Robinson Broadhurst Performing Arts Amphitheater at Winchon Community Park was a great success. Thank you to all of our volunteers, town employee, and town employees that worked so hard to organize and execute the event, Tiffany and Brian behind me in particular. It really was a group effort. And to Mrs. Anderson's point, my predecessor, Keith Hickey, as well as his, actually, that, that vision started in the Kreisler administration. And so, I think the, the important takeaway there and the message to the community is that when you have a vision for something like that, and when we're standing down over, over the weekend, looking down at the amphitheater, and seeing the community really enjoying that, I think it's easy for people to take for granted the amount of work and effort and persistence that it takes as a citizen for something like that to happen, and actually, Jane, Jane as well, since we have her, because she loves being the center of attention, so we'll put the spotlight on her real quick. But just, just to make sure the community knows, for you all to pull that off is really impressive. So, congrats to the community at large.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. LaPointe?
Along that lines, the town manager and I were briefly talking, what we could hear over the music Saturday, but am I, am I correct in understanding that ongoing, the capacity is now officially updated to eight hundred as opposed to three hundred?
Do you have the official? Are you saying a thousand?
I think that's an important thing to note. I think people think we built a facility that can house three hundred spectators, but it's a thousand.
But can they park? Is there going to be parking? Because that parking was tight.
We were talking about double-decker parking somewhere.
Yeah, so, so the parking was actually surprisingly smooth. I didn't receive any complaints.
People were so patient.
They were.
Even getting out wasn't bad.
It was really nice to see. I did see a couple of things about some people having their lawn parked on, and I think those are the wrinkles that we're going to have to iron out this summer, and probably the first couple. But I think you raise a fair question, and there has been conversation about expanding the formalized parking area, which I believe houses fifty, is that right, fifty cars? The current one that exists? Yeah, ish. And so, potentially doubling that with, you know, with the hope or understanding that three or four people are going to be in each car, so it's going to give you a little more breathing room. Than one hundred thirty in the field, so not bad.
So, good job.
Yes, absolutely. Questions, comments on the town manager's report? Justin, you had mentioned at the last meeting that you were going to put together a spreadsheet of all the projects that you have going. We're looking at approximately two, two and a half weeks remaining for your, for your role here. If you could prepare that for our next meeting and give us an update?
Sure.
I would appreciate it.
And I think that'll serve as a good update for the community, too, for some of the smaller projects in particular, where I think on occasion, people scratch their heads and wonder, like, where are we at with that? So, it'll be a good review, and I think we can highlight, you know, who, or at least anyway, ensure that for each project, there's a point person assigned to each of them, so something doesn't just slip through the cracks.
Thank you very much. All right, we have one set of minutes this evening, minutes of our regular meeting of May twenty-second, 2023, for your reading pleasure. Please review, and if you have any questions, comments, let, let us know. And if not, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of May twenty-second, 2023, as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have no communications. I do have an agenda item, excuse me, for our June twenty-sixth meeting. As most of you know, you've at least heard of Destination Winchandon, we are approaching the end of our Phase One contract with Dr. Samuels and Company. It goes through June thirtieth. At the June twenty-sixth meeting, I've asked him to be here and do a present, a draft presentation before the board of all of his findings, and at that point, and prior to that, we will have a Phase Two document from them for our consideration on the twenty-sixth as well. So, if you could please make sure that gets on our agenda for the twenty-sixth.
Will do.
Thank you so much. All right, we do have executive session this evening. Pardon me, under Mass General Law, thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Number Two, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Interim town manager search. And the second reason is under Mass General Law, thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Number Two, also, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. This is to review candidates for the Director of DPW and Facilities position and vote, look at the town manager's recommendation, and make our vote. And we will reconvene in open session to the sole purpose of adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote to go into executive session. Mrs. Blanchard?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. LaPointe?
Aye.
We are in executive session at eight fifty-two. Thank you.